Moving on to item five point one, which is the Manor Garage at ninety two Church Street, Stapleford. This application seeks full planning permission for the change of use to a car wash and car valeting business. Steve, would you like to introduce this item, including the late items, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So, as the report says, this, this is essentially a car wash and valeting operation. The application is retrospective, the use has been carrying on, there is some enforcement history. And the proposal is for a retrospective change of use, but it also includes some operational development in the form of an acoustic fence. As originally submitted, it included a canopy that's now been removed as part of the application. Evidence included a noise assessment. And obviously we consulted with the environmental health team on the likely impact to receptors. And with the acoustic fence in place, it's our view that the use would be acceptable. We're suggesting a condition that would require the acoustic fence to be installed. There is a little bit of a tweak to the originally worded condition because it is retrospective. It will have to set a time period within which the acoustic fence has to be installed. Because obviously the exam has already commenced, we can't have a pre commencement condition. But that's just a tweak that we can, we can make if members are minded to grant. So essentially, that's, that's the, that's the recommendation. There is a late item, which I can't put my hands on just at the moment. Yeah, thank you, Chair. So, yeah, so that's the, so the first point I've covered, which was to amend the wording of condition two. And I think we've got an exact form of words actually, which if you, if you'd like Chair, I can provide you. That's a, that's a description of what we would do rather than the actual word, the exact wording.
Right, yeah, whichever you feel.
Yeah, okay, so. Yeah, I'm just, because this, this happened this afternoon, I'm, I'm just struggling to, to put my hands on exactly the wording that we, that we arrived at.
Do you want to come back again?
Yeah, I mean, whilst I locate that exact wording and I can provide you with it. I mean, the, the fundamental point here really is that it's a use that, that has been ongoing. It has created some issues, there has been enforcement history. The officer has worked with the applicant, there are acoustic, there's acoustic fencing that is proposed, which in our view would be adequate to meet the task of protecting receptors from that noise nuisance. And subject to an appropriately worded condition that it could in our view be acceptable.
Okay. Thank you, Steve. There are two public speakers. Our first is Ahmed Zidori. If you wanted to come up to the seat there and press the button on the right. I think you have three minutes. And when you start, so thanks very much.
So I'm the architect dealing with the application. So as the Chair said, apart from, we've got a, so the acoustic panelling is going to go all, all the way around to reduce sound. And also we've got the vacuum cleaners and the water jets. Instead of being on the, on the ground, it's going to be internally. So everything will be internal and then obviously all the ducting etcetera is going to be underground, so that will reduce sound as well. And obviously it's going to bring more business, employability as well into the area. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Just read this out.
Thank you. On behalf of a resident, planning application discrepancies. In plan, in the planning application, the number of car parking spaces is stated to be five, but drawing shows fifteen spaces. On the planning application, it asks if the business can be seen from the road, yet it can be clearly be seen by public and neighbours. This implies that the application has been made by a stranger to the site or that the council is being misinformed. On page eight of the planning application, it asks, does this involve carrying out industrial or commercial activities or processes? The application states no, but it is clear that this application is with the intention of increasing business and the business of this company. Noise assessment. The noise assessment was done on eight days with half of them being rainy. Rain will dampen the noise, so it can be expected that the noise produced by a car wash will be higher when the weather is dry. The noise assessment indicates periods of noise being over the recommended and noise pollution level, already adding a car wash to the ambient noise in the county, will exacerbate noise nuisance and impacts on the mental health of those living nearby. To address the noise nuisance, Manor Garage proposed erecting an aluminium casing on the site. Previous actions of the business demonstrated its use of ugly cheap metal solutions, which the council have already rejected as unsightly or inappropriate. The noise report anticipates the completion of thirty car washes and ten car hooverings a day. Assuming that there is some crossover, this suggests around sixty extra journeys into Church Street. The council needs to consider the noise nuisance on a road already demonstrated to be over its advised noise level limits. Traffic concerns. Church Street is one of the main thoroughfares between Ilkston and Toton. It is also under the two routes that the fire service on Pinfold Lane use to attend incidents. Attending, adding further traffic on Church Street will delay their response times. There are parking restrictions already in place on Church Street between eight AM to six PM to avoid blocking the road. We are concerned that with the bend at the bottom of Higgin's Lane and there being no space for a crossing, pedestrians will be at increased risk of being hit by vehicles and car crashes. Cars already go down the road at speed. Environmental impact. Last year Stapleford experienced flooding as never before. This car wash will increase wastewater from both the car wash and canopy water runoff, further burdening local sewers. Doing so will exacerbate the local flooding. The proposal of adding sixty additional vehicle journeys into the neighbourhood is certain to negatively impact on air quality. With respiratory health conditions on the rise, we would ask the council to consider whether further health burden is part of the council's vision. Church Street in Stapleford has historical buildings, a beautiful church and a Grade One Saxon listed cross placing. A car wash on this street is inappropriate, damaging to the ambience and visual appearance to the local surroundings. Please consider the, oh unfortunately we can't share the pictures with you. We are concerned that this business has no respect for legal responsibilities, building the previous canopy without planning permission, being one additional example. We believe that this company has demonstrated poor working practices and the breaking of the law making it impossible to support this planning application. We request that the council ask, decline this application, deciding once and for all that a car wash is not appropriate for Church Street.
Thank you, Cat. In order to open debate, I will move the item. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks Greg. Comments from anyone? councillor Watts?
Yeah, thank you Chair. A few criticisms to start with. Firstly, we don't seem to have any of the elevations included in the papers, which was surprising and disappointing. I've just had a quick look online and the residents is absolutely right, there are fifteen parking spaces shown on the, on the plans. They should have been included within the papers, I think it's probably just an oversight. What I'm also concerned about with in planning history, twenty twenty two, application refused on grounds of visual amenity, twenty twenty three, applications refused on grounds of visual amenity, and yet in twenty twenty four, no assessment of visual amenity at all. Which given as well the, the lack of elevations makes it even more difficult to assess this application. I do know the site well, it's not far from where I live, it's one I go past on a very regular basis. I think a lot of the concerns that have been addressed, that have been raised by the residents are very valid. And whilst I approach this with a completely open mind, I would take some persuading that this is actually appropriate for here. Thank you.
councillor Bothinger?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the site visit today. But, but it's been trying to catch the pictures that goes up. It said that the extra acoustic fencing would be going on the southwest. I'm not a hundred percent certain, I can see where the south is and where the, the west is, but I'm not sure where the fencing is. So that would be good to know, because if that was two metre high fencing along the footpath, that would feel quite overpowering to someone walking along it. If it's round the outside edge, which it seems to be on, what I can see with the pictures, that would, I don't think it would be an issue and it would reduce sound going to neighbours.
Thank you. councillor Owen?
Yes, thank you Chairman. I wasn't able to attend the site meeting this morning. But two years ago, I attended the site meeting at that location when the previous applications were discussed. And I have some grave concerns about this, I have to say. And I pick up on what councillor Watts said, that, and I got the, those, those two statements, three point one and three point two marked off myself. Planning permission was refused for the change of use to a car wash and car valeting business, including the erection of a canopy, protective screens and additional drainage. And in twenty twenty three, a revised scheme seeking full planning condition for a change of use to a car wash and valeting business was refused on the grounds of visual amenity and residential amenity as a result of concerns regarding noise resulting from jet washing and hoovering. And yet we seem to have an identical application where the recommendation is for approval. And I'm at a loss to understand what has changed between twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Now, this site, you can say, well, people choose to live around a garage and therefore they must expect some noise. But my understanding is that this had always been a car showroom. And whilst there would be an element of noise and visitors coming to the car showroom, it would be in no way like what is going to be proposed or is being proposed now. To my mind, there's going to be a huge loss of amenity to residents. And to put up an acoustic screen is all very well. These acoustic screens are not as wonderful as you might think. When the M1 was widened as it went through Nutall, we all rejoiced that there was an acoustic screen going along either side of the M1 as it went through Nutall. But you wouldn't notice that there was an acoustic screen there because of the noise from the M1 that you still get. So I have little faith in an acoustic screen deflecting or decreasing the noise to any significant extent. And I think the point that councillor Watts has also made is very telling, that we've got no dimensions, I don't think, to this acoustic screen. We've got some diagrams there and pictures, but I don't think it gives any, any dimensions whatsoever. And if that acoustic screen is going to be of a significant height, it's going to be an appalling outlook for the residents that live in these very nice properties at the site and indeed those properties that are across the road. We've had two refusals of planning applications for carrying out a car wash and a valeting service at this site. And yet it is going on. It's going on. I think that, and Mr Sims will correct me if I'm wrong. The refusals have been completely ignored. And presumably over a two-year period, the department has been carrying out enforcement action to an extent that we now have this application, this retrospective application. And I do long for the time when retrospective applications are charged at a multiple of normal application fees. Because nothing irritates me more than somebody doing something. And then when enforcement starts, I think, well, I'll put in a planning application because I can't carry on any longer. As an ex officio member, I can't vote on this committee, as you know Chairman. But if I could, I would be very definitely voting against the recommendation.
Thank you. councillor Carr?
councillor Owen has just really pointed out what I wanted to point out, but really just to say that we have two applications that were refusals, yet we still had to go down the route for enforcement action. Because the business carried on doing something that it hadn't got permission for. Thank you.
Okay, before Steve responds, any other comments from councillor Pringle?
Thank you Chair. When, when I was there this morning, there was also a couple of vehicles there having tyres replaced. And that was in the area where the car wash is going to be. Out in the open air, lots of noise from the machinery that takes the wheel nuts off. And it says here that, there's something I read somewhere where this is, no repairs can take place if this becomes a car wash. Is that correct? I'm sure I read that somewhere.
Have you finished Don?
Because we're, we're giving, we're given permission for a car wash. But I'm sure there was something in here that said, here we go. No repair, maintenance, paint spraying or sale of vehicles shall be permitted on the site. That's the question of, is replacing tyres a repair? If that's the case, that can't be done.
Hello? Anybody, any other further comments?
It's point five, five point one on page eighteen. Do you want to respond, Steve?
Yes, thank you Chair. I'm just trying to locate that reference that councillor Pringle identified just then. Five point one on page eighteen.
Five point one.
I mean, there were a few other points to come back on, points of clarity in fact, weren't there that, that, I mean.
Well, Mr Sims, it's also condition four that's being proposed.
Okay. Well, so just to take the points in turn though, I think the first point that councillor Watts made was really a kind of query as to whether visual amenity has been considered in, in this case. And there is a section starting actually on page eighteen relating to design. And so it's recognised, as, as I mentioned in the introduction, that there had originally been a canopy structure proposed. But now what we're looking at is, is, is just an acoustic fence. Now that relates to a point I think that councillor Owen raised about the size and scale and so forth of said fence. There is a drawing that was submitted, drawing A one one four. It's, yeah, I mean, it may, it may not be attached to the, to the, to the report, the officer report, but it, it's part of the application pack that is on the, on the website.
Chairman, with respect, that sort of information should be available in the report.
The, I, okay, so the, the question of, of how the plans are, are kind of reported, I suppose, is one thing, but the legal point, I guess, and obviously I defer to the legal officer, is that submitted was a drawing that contained a dimensioned fence, which we've had regard to when we've written our report. And we're content that in the light of the enforcement, of the environmental health officers' advice and the noise assessment that was done on the basis of that drawing, that the acoustic fence will be adequate to the purpose of ameliorating the, the noise impact. So that's, that's the basis of the recommendation. I, I, you know, there may be points of, of, of practice that, you know, we might have to take on board in terms of how we report drawings and so forth. I, I understand there's been some change to that in the last few months. Whether we present photographs and drawings on the PowerPoint or whether we bind them in. But the fact is, as I say, it was submitted. And we do have information that is legally enforceable that we can refer to in conditions. So that, that's the point really about the design. The design has been taken into account. There is inevitably a bit of a trade-off between visual impact and the effectiveness of, of the fence, which the officer has, has addressed. So the further point, yeah, a valid point actually about whether the acoustic fence would be effective. And that is addressed in the condition as originally drafted. I will shortly, with your permission Chair, read the revised condition.
Yep.
Which also makes reference to the density of the materials, which is critical for the acoustic performers to be as the acoustic engineer predicted it, it would be. Without that specific information and without that stipulation, we can't be sure that it would provide the acoustic attenuation that it ought to. So that is something that we can write into the condition that, and that would, in our view, deal with the problem. I'm just trying to find the point that councillor Pringle raised about the restriction of, I think it was.
Page eighty two, hour five one, the third bullet point.
So that was the environmental health team's advice. Yeah, so, I mean, conceivably, you could, I think that the difficulty here is that what we've got, and I, I, you know, councillors have alluded to this, haven't they, that the, the history of the site has been one of mixed use essentially. So there have been car sales going on and there have been some aspects of repair work, repair going on. So it's then a question of whether we can legitimately attach a condition that stops them from doing things that they've previously lawfully done. And so, on balance, it wouldn't be reasonable, in our opinion, to restrict them from carrying on activities that lawfully previously they have carried on. Albeit that we've taken the advice of the, of the environmental health officers and accepted that with the acoustic screening, it would be just about acceptable. So it doesn't have to be ideal, it has to just be acceptable. So that's the, that's the officer's view that we've come to. I'm just, just checking that weren't any other further points that we needed to address.
councillor Pringle?
Chair, it's, I, I, Mr Sims is struggling a little bit to sort of explain things here, but para five one is prox to environmental health saying, no objections subject to conditions. The first bullet point is acoustic fencing. The second one is opening hours and the third one is no repair, maintenance, paint spraying or sale of vehicles shall be permitted on the site. What they're quite clearly saying, the environmental health, that you can't do repairs, maintenance, paint spraying or sale of vehicles on the site. They're not saying, they're not saying it's something that's, that's happening, they're actually physically saying it can't be done. That's the way I read it.
So, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just to reiterate, and I think the officer has covered this in, in the principle, but the lawful use, albeit mixed to the extent that though, though there has been some vehicle repair activity and there has been some car sales activity carried on in the past. What we can't do is go backwards in the planning history and start to try to regulate things that have previously been lawful. What, what we can do is look at the change that is being proposed and regulate the change. And the change is to formalise the car valeting activity that is now proposed in addition to these other activities. That combined set of activities was what the noise assessment was carried out on and which the acoustic barrier was considered to ameliorate adequately.
Okay.
But the question of adequacy, let me be clear, is, is for members to, to, to take. If I may as well Chair, sorry.
Right, go on.
But, but the, the reworded condition, which as I say, takes account of the fact that this is retrospective. So unfortunately, we recommended a condition here that, that was based on action being taken pre commencement, because, but because this development has already commenced, we can't have a condition that would be effective, that relied on pre commencement. So what we're proposing is that the use of the site for car washing and valeting must cease unless the acoustic barrier is installed within one month of this permission. The barrier must thereafter be retained during any use of the site for car washing and valeting. And we then go on on the point about its effectiveness to say that the barrier shall be constructed from high quality timber panels of a minimum density of twenty kilograms per square metre, which is close bordered and installed with no gaps, including at ground level, to the height and location as shown on drawing A one one four. The second part of that is essentially identical to the condition that we originally recommended. But it takes account of the fact that it's already occurred and gives a set time period, so it makes it enforceable.
Okay, understand. councillor Marshall?
Yeah, that, nobody on this committee likes retrospective applications. And councillor Owen is, is correct that, you know, that has to be addressed. And we hope that it's addressed in the future by some kind of like penalty for retrospective applications. And I'd be in agreement for him there, but that concept isn't new to this committee. And as such, you know, we are required to judge what is before us here tonight. Now, in doing that as well, we have a reliance both on the professional opinion of the officers and indeed the technical advice that they provide in their reports. Now, my view is, we, we undertake whether we trust in that advice and understand it. And then we look to the condition in as whether we think that is adequate, responsible enough to address the issues we're concerned about. Now, I think councillor, Mr Sims has said that there are dimension specifications submitted as part of the application for the acoustic barriers. And we have sought professional advice from our officers about whether them acoustic barriers are acceptable. And in their advice, it is. And unless we are acoustic engineers or can offer a counter view to that, we must be cognisant of that. In addition, there are elements around, and we've heard from the applicant about how there'll be additional measures to suppress machinery noise associated with car washing. And then there are additional conditions as part of the recommendation around opening hours to be responsible. And around how, notwithstanding councillor Pringle's point, whether any works will take place within or without the curtilage of the building itself. So when we take all of those things together, combined with the fact that it's a busy road, combined with the fact that the noise survey, by the way, says things are acceptable, and combined with the fact that anecdotally, pretty much noise from this site is dwarfed by the noise of the traffic on the main road. I think, in that sense, this proposal is acceptable, in that sense. Now, I'm not saying there hasn't been a checkered history at the side. And I'm not saying that we're frustrated about, about retrospective applications. But are the things before us tonight acceptable? In my view, yes. Coming with that must be an expectation that as a planning committee, and this is one of the central points, is that we expect, as we do with all applications, that the applicant adheres to the conditions within the licence. And we have the powers to do that. And if they're not, beyond no mistake, we will expect that action is taken to rectify the issues associated with the site. But that's incumbent upon, I guess, us as councillors in, in discussion with offices around what our expectations are. But in terms of the application before us, I think on balance, it's acceptable. And I'll be supporting it. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. councillor Bothinger?
The question I asked was how far round the fencing went.
Do you want to take that one now? Yes, thank you Chair. I mean, again, I know there is an issue being raised about whether members have had an opportunity to view this drawing. But, but the drawing does demonstrate where the acoustic fence would be installed. And it's, I mean, the key location is around the back of the site, if I can turn it that way.
Is it the one that's up there at the moment?
Yeah, that's definitely, yes, yes, so, um. So it, I mean, obviously, I, I can then go back to the fact that it was noise assessed by an acoustic engineer. And they considered that that would be appropriate attenuation for the most sensitive receptors. Um, if I may, if that, whether that deals with the point, I mean. But if I, if I, just on the, on the point about, um, the con, condition four and this issue of previous uses. I think I'm now better understand, having thought about it. What councillor Pringle was, was saying, because the subtle difference between what the EHOs were saying. And what we're suggesting in condition four is that condition four says that there can't be any of those activities outside the building. Whereas the EHOs were suggesting none of those activities at all. Which wouldn't be lawfully possible for us to enforce because it was an existing lawful use prior to the current uses. So what we've done is taken what the EHOs have said. And said that we're going to restrict that activity outside, because obviously it's when it's outside that it generates the noise that causes the problem. So it will be okay to carry out vehicle repairs inside the garage. That has in the past, has happened. But what we're saying is, don't carry them out outside, because those are particularly noisy activities that we think, that we think are high risk. So I think that, hopefully that explains the difference between what the EHOs have said and what we've put in the condition. Okay.
Sorry, Chair, can I say, it's just, it's just that if, if, if they're, maybe they're not aware of that condition. Prior to this meeting. But you, you thought that if, if, if they were going to be working the way they're going to work as part of this condition. You wouldn't have cars outside on the day that we're going to visit, being worked on and creating a lot of noise, would you? That's just my way of looking at it.
Um, I, I can't obviously attest to what's in the mind of the applicant at the point of the site visit. Uh, I mean, all, all I can say is.
Two vehicles there today, sitting outside, having, having wheels. Replaced with noisy impact wrenches taking the wheels off. I was the first one that got there.
So I suppose the point would be that that condition would, would, on the face of it, deal with some of that.
Would stop them.
Yeah, that problem.
Okay, councillor Bonn. I don't know if we need to close it.
Um, so bad news is I have a two-part question, apologies. Um, but before I do, I just want to say, like, I appreciate the check of his, history this site has. And in terms of multiple applications, I think it's important to be, to make the point that, as I've already pointed out. The application that we're looking at is not the same as the one that was refused. Um, and it's, you know, when someone has come back with a right revised application, we can't judge it on the basis of one that's been submitted before. Um, and also that changes have been made, as has already been explained, to address all those issues. I have a few other specific points around it and then, um. Depending on what your answer is, I, I have some, um, conditions to suggest be added to this process and. To address some of the issues that have been raised tonight and also some of the things, um, like I say, around this site. Um, the first one is that in the late items you submitted, it makes a point about the fact that the pressure washer and vacuum casings. Um, will be fitted to the noise generating equipment housed inside the building and not the doorway. Um, so that means that. So my question is, so does that mean that the, the car washing won't happen outside, but the equipment is housed inside to minimise the noise from the generators that comes from that? And I've understood, I just want to confirm that I've understood that correctly. Um, because in the condition four, it says obviously all these things can't happen outside, but it doesn't say car washing can't happen outside, and obviously how car washing can happen inside a building. Hopefully that's clear. Um, the second one is that in the paperwork in section six point three, it says that the fence will be stepped back. But in, um, condition two, it doesn't repeat that in the condition. Presumably though, that is indicated on the plan, uh, which is referenced in condition two, but I just want to confirm that is correct. Um, and then my third question is, if we were to refuse, um, this planning application. Which I'm not minded to do based on the discussion here, but if, even if we were to refuse this on the grounds of all the discussion that's been had tonight. This site would still be able to continue operating its garage because it is doing that. Um, it's doing so already and is therefore operating under lawful use. That's my understanding from what we've been told tonight and I just want to confirm that is correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. So, um, the point about the, the housing, it was, it was essentially, um. The report referred to the, um, to a casing which, um. The officer had previously understood was going to be around a door. On the drawing, it looked like a door that was going to be, um, gonna, gonna have the casing applied to it. Um, in actual fact, the casing was a proposal for an acoustic housing for some pieces of equipment. It happened because it was in very simple elevational form on the drawing. It wasn't clear that it was actually an acoustic housing. The fact is that that housing would be applied to equipment that would be inside the building as shown on the drawing. And it wasn't deemed necessary and it wasn't part of the assessment that the noise engineer carried out. And so we haven't attached any condition to it. It doesn't have any consequence beyond just the point of clarification, but it's not going to be applied to the door. It's simply an idea for a housing that would, um, contain noise breakout from the vacuum or the pressure washer inside the building. Um, we don't consider it necessary to, to, to deal with the problem, so we've not conditioned it. That, that explains hopefully that first point. The second point. And I would defer to my legal colleague on, on, on this, but my understanding of the, the law, um, on these issues is that when, uh, an authorised use has been carried on. Um, if, um, that use ceases, you have a legal right to revert to the last lawful use. And our best understanding of the last lawful use is that it was a mixed use that comprised car sales and some elements of. Car repair, MOT and similar activities. Um, and, but that isn't a matter for this committee to, to determine, it's just a matter of law. They could go back to the last use. We would then be in a world where we'd have to estab, establish what that last use was and whether it was lawful.
And I'm sorry, my third question was about the fence.
The fence and the stepping back. Um, so the drawings aren't tremendously helpful on this point. And it may be that, um. If this is a particular concern of members, we could perhaps require further details to, to show how the fence will be stepped back. Because the drawing itself doesn't, on my reading, show any stepping from the boundary.
Can we just delegate that to somebody within planning?
It's possible to delegate the conditions generally around that general point to deal with that, or?
Right, in that, sorry, just to come back, following those answers, can I therefore propose, just in here, before we go to the vote, can I propose that two conditions be added to this? The first is to amend that second condition, just to add something about the fence being stepped back as per, um, elsewhere in the application. And can I also propose that a second condition be added, which says that, um, if it's possible, that this is a provisional, um, agreement for like one year? Because I think what, basically what bringing this in is it sort of takes this site from being something that. Has lawful use, but therefore no specific conditions attached to it and therefore no rules around how that site operates. Because it is just something that has developed over time. And I know the feelings on this, um, council about, uh, on this committee about that happening. But by bringing this in and then approving this with a fixed timeframe, both for the fence to be put up and for it to operate as twelve months on a trial. Trial basis will bring in quite firm conditions about how that site then has to operate and has to work, based on the recommendations of our officers. And then if the site doesn't meet those conditions after twelve months, then they wouldn't be able to extend it. Can I propose that those two can, that amendment to the decision and a second condition be added?
Thank you, Greg.
Wouldn't we vote on that then?
You can go to the vote now?
Move to the vote? No? Don't we have to vote, do we have to vote on the, the conditions first?
Yeah, we have to vote on the amendment votes, don't we?
Surely you should listen to debate and then the vote on the amendment and vote on the substantive motion.
Okay.
Okay, I was just going to say that this has already been raised about. The lack of information we now get in the reports. Can I remind people that we have two ways you can determine a, a planning application? Either on delegated power to the officers or it comes to committee. Surely we should have exactly the same information at committee as the officers have to make their decision when it's delegated and we haven't got that tonight. We're now coming up with all these additional conditions that I haven't thought through. I'm not clear what they are. Surely the best thing would be actually to defer this application for a fuller report. Including the conditions that councillor Bun has, uh, proposed. Uh, I don't, I don't think that I've got enough information to make the right decision tonight, I'm sorry.
Councillor Ball.
Okay, I'm probably a bit late now. Um, that's a condition number two. I mean, I'm concerned about the residents that live locally. I mean, when is this, um, fencing, this acoustic fencing going to be put up? That's the thing I'd like to know.
I think it's already been suggested it gets done within one month.
Yeah, I understand that, but I was. If that works, okay.
Yeah, costs a lot money though, don't you, Greg?
Right. Okay, I'm going to go to the division, so can we vote on the conditions?
Yeah, there hasn't been a proposal for it.
Delegate it or I can.
I could tell it all, come and delegate it.
Tell you a condition if you'd like.
Right. Vote on the conditions, okay?
Would you like me, Chair, to read the temporary permission condition to you that you can vote on?
Oh, get on with it.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we've already closed it.
But do you need the exact wording or do you need to delegate it?
Yeah.
We're erratic, Chair. Can I formally propose to defer them?
Can you what? Sorry, Steve.
We propose that we defer this application.
Okay, yeah. So which one do we do first, Cat, under advisement?
We do the deferral first.
We do the deferral first. Okay. All those in favour of deferral? The conditions. Thank you, Chair. So the first vote was on the conditions which was proposed by councillor Bun, seconded by councillor Greg Marshall. All those in favour? All those against? All those abstaining? Okay. So now we're going to vote on whether we defer it, which was proposed by councillor Steve Carr. Seconded by David Watts. All those in favour? All those against? All those abstaining? Okay. So I think we're about right now to go to the vote on the application. So, uh, all those in favour?
And that's with the amendments that you've already worked on, including Steve's amendment to the condition two.
Yeah.
And the additional condition.
Yeah, correct.
Who tells, does Alexa tell you to go and look in a year?
We, we have ways.
That's an enforcement issue. Okay, all those against? All those abstaining? So the motion is carried.